Open the meeting and we are back on the MUPD discussion. I have a couple of comments I want to make and then we'll begin to deal with as you want to. And my question is, given the intention of the motion, as can I ask counsel some questions before we get into that?
Sure.
Okay. I heard, so this is my comment, I heard last night that the majority of council has interest in considering what I will call MUPD 2. This is Councilor Brown's proposal that is on the table to use MUPD to build workforce housing in our city. Councilor Brown correctly states that there is interest in this community for such housing. I share that interest and appreciate his efforts. Councilor Clark has said he thinks that this is a simple elegant proposal. I also heard the majority believe this concept meets far more than a cursory look before moving forward. Councilor Brown himself suggests real consideration would take time, months, to fully analyze. If council wants to pursue this path, you can give direction to staff to look into this concept and others regarding the development of workforce housing in our community. MUPD 1 is a concept you have been working on for several years. It is based on the purposes and the ordinance of MUPD being used as a tool to build or redevelop. Robin has given you a memo on this, a mix of accessible multi-unit dwellings downtown and along transit corridors, and to help with affordable subsidized housing projects. The proposal for MUPD 1 that you have been considering puts MUPD initially in play only downtown. Other areas would be turned on as planning is completed and with neighborhood support. An example of where MUPD 1 could be helpful is in a proposed affordable subsidized housing project downtown combined with a market group housing project in a multi-use project. All experts agree that it is still very challenging to build housing in our downtown. And as we heard last night from environmentalists and those concerned with climate change and peak oil, we are urged to continue to focus housing development in the urban core. And my, okay, there it's back again. I understand that we have some councillors who are not supportive of MUPD for this purpose, but the last I heard, the majority of you appear to be in support if the project meets the standards you've been discussing. I would also add that people keep bringing up student housing in discussion, but I want to make clear that council has already decided this tool would not be used for student housing. It is true that student housing is a large part of the numbers of multi-unit housing that have been built and counted in the inventory in recent years. There have also been some large upscale apartments and assisted living facilities built without MUPD on Good Pasture, Coburg, and there are large multi-unit projects going up on River Road and Bailey Hill. This indicates that under many circumstances, multi-unit housing will grow without any MUPD. However, keeping this tool available to help development of the kind we want, to the standard we want, where we want it, would still require focus and precise use of MUPD with all the public benefit and oversight you've been discussing. This also creates a place for neighborhoods to fully participate in the preferred location of desired multi-unit projects within the livability goals of the neighborhood. So today, you could work to complete your MUPD 1 work and give direction to pursue a more detailed look at MUPD 2. The first question I am going to ask is, do you want to keep MUPD 1 in play as we have been discussing and working on over the last few years? I will go around the table and ask for a yes or no. If the answer is no, then I will look to you for how you want to proceed forward. If the answer is yes, I will also ask if you want to have staff analyze a possible MUPD 2 for future consideration in keeping with your need for lengthier discussion and more input on the best way to incentivize the development of workforce housing. So, my first question is going around the table, do you want to keep MUPD 1 in play? Councilor Clark?
Mayor, I appreciate your desire to want to have this discussion. I kind of want us to continue from where we were because I thought we would work through that question. So I guess I will answer you and say that there were several pieces of MUPD 1 that I did not think were in the best interest of the community. And I thought that a combination of this, what you're calling MUPD 2, with some of those elements of number one created the best scenario. So I suppose I would move to bring that, that George's motion back to the table.
Okay. So, I guess I'm going to go with a motion's a motion, so.
Well, not quite. As the presider, you asked a question. You can rule the motion out of order at this time because you recognized Mike to answer your specific question, so you can say the motion's not in order at this time and continue with the process that you started.
Motion's not in order at this time and I'll continue the process. We'll come back to that.
Want to answer a question?
I think I did. That I, no, there were multiple pieces of the first idea that I was not in favor of.
I think he's not saying yes or no.
I think I was being very clear that there was, I much prefer the MUPD 2 option, and we weren't complete in our discussion yet because there are pieces of one that we can add to that and make it the best possible option.
Okay. Councilor Pryor.
Yeah, I think in the effort to talk about MUPD 1 and MUPD 2, we're talking about MUPD as a tool to create workforce housing, or MUPD as a tool to promote development and density in specific areas, use it as a development tool. The answer to your question would be, yes, I want to continue to talk about MUPD as a development tool, and I want to continue talking about MUPD as a workforce housing tool. I think the conversation we've had for the past couple of years has been primarily around it as a development tool. I'm intrigued by the notion of how we could have more of a workplace conversation, but I don't want to talk about that right now because I think there's more research that needs to be done. We're kind of saying intriguing idea would be an interesting use, let's talk more about it. So I think your idea of saying, let's talk about the one aspects and the two aspects is, is a good one. So my answer is, yes, I want to continue talking about the one discussion because I still like the idea of it as a development tool. But I don't want to ignore the opportunity that the two discussion could also represent, but the timing is probably the issue for me. We're at different points in time. The housing discussion is a relatively new one, it's a relatively intriguing one, I think still needs some more work, whereas the one discussion, which has been going on for over two years, to me is more fully formed and I would still want to continue to move forward with that.
Councilor Zelenka.
Yeah, I was in supportive of MUPD over the years for a variety of reasons, and I only voted for, as I recall, one MUPD project, Capstone, because after 30 years of no development on that site, I had no prospects, I didn't see how we were going to move forward with anything downtown unless we did something like that. So I voted for it, although I was very much disappointed in how it turned out, and there's a lot of lessons learned, which brings me to MUPD 2. The lessons learned from the Capstone project are what I've been trying to work on for the last year and a half, which is to revise it so that it has clear public benefits and that it has transparency in it, realizing that there was a council majority that wanted MUPD to continue. If there's not a majority of the council that wants to see MUPD continue, then I'm, I'm fine with scaling it back and having it be much more proposal. George Brown's proposal, I think, is pretty much the same thing that George and I proposed about a year and a half ago, little derivative of it. And so if that's the nature of where we're going to go, that's fine with me. I was trying to revise the program so that it had more public benefits and transparency. So I'm eager to see MUPD 2 go forward, but I think there's some tweaking and more work that needs to recur on it.
So is your answer no to MUPD 1?
Correct. I didn't support MUPD 1 in the first place.
Okay.
I was prepared to just say plain no, but I'll say, since everyone else is saying something else, I will also. I think there is great opposition to this whole program in the community, and there will be more opposition the more we talk about the need for funding for parks maintenance and libraries and, and other things. And I think I would prefer to forget the whole thing, but I will vote for, I will probably vote for things I think will improve it in case it passes, but in the end, I will vote against giving tax exemptions. When also, there are people in town who can, can't really afford to pay their real estate taxes, and they hear that some wealthy developers getting 10 years without taxes, they get pretty unhappy. Thank you.
Councilor Poling?
I have one question. The detailed analysis on George's proposed motion, how long would that take to come back to council?
I don't know for sure. I suspect that it would take, it could take a couple of months anyhow, depending on how we want to do that. So it could take probably a minimum of 60 days, could be longer than that.
I'll say yes.
You'll say yes to, to continue with one?
Yes.
Mayor, with all due respect, I think you've introduced an element here that's clouding the issue unintentionally, I'm sure. We're working on a revised MUPD. We're not working on MUPD 1, MUPD 2, MUPD 10, MUPD 30. We're working on a revised MUPD, and my motion is one of the revision options, along with all the other revision options that staff has already worked on, and the proposed ordinance, and the ones that are on the list that we're going down and doing the check-offs. So, you know, it's, it's, we're, we're working on the revised ordinance, and so I wish we would go back to, and, and there's no need, I don't believe that staff needs to analyze my motion. It's not going to take too much to analyze, but it's really one of the simplest things that you could possibly use as a standard for the program. What I suggested last night was provisional. I'm, I'm perfectly willing, on, on further reflection, to accept a friendly motion to lower that 50 percent figure that I used initially in the motion down to 30 percent. I think on, you know, I gave it quite a bit of thought last night and this morning and did a little more research, and I think a 30 percent is, will make it attractive to development, and very simple to keep track of. It'll, it'll be really simple for staff. All they would have to do would be review the rent figures to make sure that the developer is providing the 30 percent of, you know, the workforce units in the correct manner. And I reviewed the OB groups papers that they submitted to Lane County, and their portion of the project, there's two portions, one is HACSA and one is the OB groups, their portion is, they're going to create 200 units. 60 of those units are for workforce housing. That's exactly 30 percent. 60 units is 30 percent of 200 total units. And I figure with that group's experience, you know, and acumen, business acumen, that 30 percent is, is a very good figure to use. And, and when we resume this discussion, I hope that somebody offers a friendly amendment to shoot it down to 30 percent, or I will myself, I'll revise it. So, I, I don't see, you know, then we can get on to speaking about the other elements of the, the ones that we're going down the checklist and, and, you know, tidy it up. And I, you know, we could, I don't think we can maybe finish today, maybe we can, but we can finish before, you know, can bring it up again next Monday and try to wrap everything up if necessary, if we can't do it today. But my intent is not to slow it down, though, I want to emphasize that, is not to send staff down, go for holes, and, and take up a whole bunch of time. It's, it's actually more of an attempt to simplify this and make it into a program that will gain wide public acceptance. Thanks.
So, before I call on you, I just want to bring Greg up to speed here. By the way, how is everything?
It's, you want me to go ahead? They just let him out of the hospital about half an hour ago, so it's not meningitis, it's a real bad case of the flu.
I'm sorry he's got that, been sorry about that, but I'm glad it's not worse than it is.
Yeah, yeah.
So, we're back to the MUPD discussion, and in my effort to try to find a way, which some of you may disagree with, but I tried to put it out here, is what I've called MUPD 1 and MUPD 2. And MUPD 1 is continuing to pursue the work that we've been doing on MUPD for the last two years. MUPD 2 is George's proposal, which is to, to the workforce housing issue, and just trying to get a sense of where council is. And so, Councilor Clark said he prefers the housing proposal, but there are elements of the other proposal that he would.
I agree with everything you just heard George say.
Right, right.
That we should continue doing what we were doing.
And, Councilor Pryor supports in the short term, continuing with the work we've been doing, and in the long term, looking into the.
Workforce housing.
Workforce housing. Councilor Zelenka said that he had been working on improving things, but now he's leaning toward the workforce housing model. Is that accurate?
Well, I think all the things that we've been doing, including still home.
Okay. And Betty, as, as usual, said she doesn't like any of the MUPD, but she will work on trying to make it as good as she can make it, if it's going to go anywhere. And George said he supported keeping on with the number one, and George here said he wants to pursue the, what he's been pursuing, and would include a lot of the other elements.
As I did.
And now it's, it's Claire.
Thank you. Well, I actually appreciate the mayor's question. I was thinking along the same lines, and I have constituents who have lobbied me on both sides of this question, some who hate the idea and others who think it's a very valuable program, including, of course, Mr. Obie's project, which I think would be a great project for that part of our town, but I, I don't want to pass policy just to create one specific project. So I personally would support moving ahead with continuing the revisions of the original MUPD program and get downtown back online, and then work on creating a robust version that incorporates what Councilor Brown's motion is, which could be done before all the area planning that needs to happen and the other parts that we've proposed for MUPDs. And, you know, then the neighborhoods who are part of the, the review panel would have both these options to consider in terms of programs in the future. I do think Councilor Brown's version needs additional analysis because we've heard, at least through Denny, that the analysis from the committee that looked at this program was that creating it in this format may mean that it never gets utilized. So I think that's an important question for us to look at further if Councilor Brown's motion continues to have support. So I guess my short answer is yes, I'd be willing to continue to work on improving the current program and then take up this slightly different version in a different context.
Now it's your turn.
Okay. I'm, I'm in general supportive of what the, the motion that Councilor Brown has brought for. One of my concerns last night was where the 50 percent figure came from, and if we had the data to back that up, or would there be another threshold that would be either lower, or whatever the case may be, that would be more acceptable. But my, my concern is, similar to Claire's concern, is that we don't create a situation where we have a tool that's unusable, or has so many limitations that people don't want to use it. So I would like to see some analysis around what the real figure would be for a workforce housing unit element, inclusion, what percentage would that look like? And, you know, I, I think that there is a certain, you know, given the, the controversy around this and people being polarized in the community on this, I think that we have to do a certain level of due diligence around making sure that our facts are straight and that we have, you know, a, a program that we can take back to the community that is solid and that is workable, that's usable, that makes sense, and it has the appropriate level of rigor and discipline that, you know, this council has sought to create as a result of the previous program lacking virtually any rigor or discipline at all. So, we want to have a better ordinance, a better piece of legislation, in my estimation, and I think that we have an opportunity to get there. But I want to see what the data looks like, and, you know, if Denny and your folks can, you know, give us, you know, what this looks like in terms of, you know, how we reshape the tool, and, you know, and how we can make sure that it is functional for, you know, developers, you know, to be able to have successful projects, then, you know, I can get my head around that.
So that I'm, I'm a little confused with your answer. I think everybody has interest in the concept.
Yeah.
George also said he'd lower it to 30, just a lot of help.
Most people around the table have said they think it, like you just said, needs more analysis. Some don't. But we're sort of four and three on the, to keep moving forward with the work that we have done, and I'm trying to.
Yeah, I'm willing to move forward with the work that we have done.
So that brings us smack to 4-4. So that's where we are. All right. And now we're going to talk about George's, the motion is on the table.
We didn't bring it back to the table, did we?
Yeah, you can bring it back.
You can bring it back.
So moved.
All right.
Is this the amended to the first?
This is, this is motion number one where we left yesterday.
Excuse me, so Mike just moved to take it off the table?
Yeah.
If we can just have somebody second and then vote to, okay?
We can second and.
And then now you just vote to take it off?
Everybody in favor, please indicate. That's everybody. Thank you.
Okay. Greg, I think you missed the last part of what I was saying when you came in there.
Can you fill me, fill me in a little bit?
Yeah, I, on reflection, I did a little more research and more thinking last night, and I came to the conclusion that the 50 percent figure that I originally proposed was too high. And if no one wants to offer a second, I would like to change it down to 30 percent. Now, why did I pick 30 percent?
Your second?
I was, and I agree.
So it's down?
It's down to 30 percent now. Thank you, Councilor Clark. I reviewed the OB group's materials for their application, you know, to Lane County, and they are separate from HACSA. They are going to build 200 units. 60, 60 of those units will be workforce housing. That's exactly 30 percent of the total number of units. And so I don't know, I don't believe that we need to do a lot of analysis on that particular figure. Yeah, the 50 percent, sure, that was probably unworkable. But I just figure that we don't need to send staff on a big, you know, hold meetings and do research, because if somebody of that stature figures they can make profit building, you know, 30 percent workforce units, then, then it's doable. Because they don't, I'm not in the habit of, you know, proposing projects that they don't think are going to work. So I, now, now we're talking about 30 percent. And the intent is not to slow things down, not to delay it. I'd like to, if this motion passes, then, you know, just continue down our list. It's not, it's not meant to obfuscate, or actually, I think it's a, a really nice simplification of, of the things that we've been working on. Thank you.
So I've got George Poling and Mike and Alan in the queue, and before I go to them, I would like to ask staff for a, what they are thinking at this point about this proposal.
Yeah, I mean, I think the rents is an important consideration. I mean, there's, there's a lot of goals that are in play. We have location considerations, so we want to make sure that whatever changes that we make to the program still meet the goals for getting that density in the core and along the corridors. And we also want high quality. I think that's something that we've heard from the council. What gets built in the form that it gets built, and the quality of materials and so forth, is very important. You know, there's goals around affordability, there's goals around amenities and energy efficiency, and I think the critical question is, given all of that, we really haven't taken this program yet and circled back and kind of done an analysis and say, does it still work? And does it still pencil out and meet all the community's goals? And I think the, the opportunity for a little bit more time really points to maybe a need to kind of look to see how this affects, affects our overall goals, not just affordability, but all of those goals kind of wrapped up. And we've done a lot of that work already through the TRG and such, but it.
Your overall response is that you, and that's just a, that's a staff, I ask, that's a staff conclusion that more analysis is needed, right?
If there's major changes at this point yet.
All right. And George Poling?
Thank you. Yeah, when I first read this motion, it raised a lot of red flags, and part of it was the wording and part of it was the 50 percent, but the 50 percent is now resolved, so I'm getting a little more comfortable with it. My concern is using the word affordable housing. To me, when you say affordable housing, and, I mean, no disrespect to anybody or anything, but to me, that is low-cost or subsidized housing such as some of our nonprofits provide for the, the extremely poor in our community. The way affordable housing, I, I'm interpreting it now as used in this, is housing that is affordable to rent or purchase, as long as there's certain other things involved. So I, I think that the, the wording affordable housing should be taken out of there to make it clear what we're talking about, what type of housing we're ma, we're talking about. And then on, on sub 3, it says, in reference to the payment, the city shall allocate all funds received from the provision in section 2 to workforce and affordable programs within Eugene. I don't understand what that means. If I could get a real quick definition, then I'll continue on with a couple more statements.
Yeah, I'd be happy to answer that. I, I was thinking about adding homelessness projects, too. It's not very much different from the other language present in other pages of the reworked ordinance to, you know, the provision about the 10 percent kickback, so the exemption to be used for affordable housing projects. That's the language that's already in the reworked.
Okay, and here we go again, using that word affordable housing. Are you referring to low-cost housing then?
I'm referring to workforce housing, is the intent of this motion. And if it would make anyone feel, you or anyone else feel better, that, that and/or affordable housing phrase could be, and/or affordable could be struck, and just kept at workforce. Yeah.
Okay.
And, and then, you know, and then as far as 3 goes, workforce and affordable programs within Eugene, that was really vague, that's, that's vague in the proposed revisions, too. What does that mean? Well, it could mean it would go to a fund and then build up over the years, and then be used to support someone's project. I, I was thinking about that last night, too, and I thought, well, you know, maybe what it could mean, something that we really need, is put this in a fund and let it build up and have single-room occupancy for housing-first homeless project. It would take a while to build that up, but that would be an option, and we don't really have to decide on that today. What, this is going to take a few years for the money to build up to a significant amount that you could actually put to good use.
You've still got some time here.
That's good. The, one other thing that I have is, the cost of the dwelling must not be, must not be no more than 30 percent of the area median income, the AMI. Is that going to be on a sliding scale if the AMI changes halfway through, or is it, okay, you come in at X amount, and this is what you're going to pay for the 10 years? Or?
No, it would change.
So it would be kind of on a sliding scale?
If the area median income goes up, then that, then that number would change.
That's fine.
That would have to be reviewed.
And then the last thing is, I just want to make it clear that on the front page, the fifth motion down, I had a proposed amendment to make it so that if a developer had the required percentage, he wouldn't have to pay the fee. And in reading this, it appears that that's built into. And in reading this, it appears that that's built into, to your motion also.
Yes.
Okay. All right. That's good.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay. Mike?
I'm comfortable moving forward with this now and not waiting, and here's why. There's a couple of pieces that are, I think, are important for us to talk about appropriately. I appreciate, Mayor, the, your view on this. Mine is a little different.
Surprise.
I see that in the previous discussions, we had certain knowledge that some of the, the elements and the amendments that were proposed were poison pills for MUPD. We know that certainly because there were only three proposals in this particular zone, the downtown area, that are being considered in the next year or two. And one of those folks wrote us an email and said, the after-the-fact financials that were being required is a no-go, be done. We heard that in specific in a public email. So, we know that the, the desire to see somebody's tax returns after the fact, the desire to see the, the complex reporting for financials after the fact keeps people from using MUPD. We know that. This, for me, is, is okay for us to begin to implement and, and to shape as we go because it's predictable. Everybody knows that what the percentages are in advance. They know their own planning for what they prepare to ask for in rents because all their financials are calculated on that, and they can plan appropriately with certain predictability what it will cost them to do so. And there's no after-the-fact surprises. There's no sharing information that helps them be competitive in a competitive environment that they're not comfortable sharing. And I frankly think that this is a way where we achieve the end we're looking for with a responsible ordinance. And this element, as I said yesterday, is an elegant way to get at that and to add a new dimension. Now, I wouldn't define this as the sole reason for it. I'd say we're still on a path to the same thing, goal we were before, which is to create MUPD in a way that brings the best community benefit forward and makes it a tool that the public can understand and appreciate and accept. I believe this amendment helps us get there in a more elegant and intelligent way, and I'm happy to put it in place now. And then, look at a one-year review to see if the 30% is the appropriate number or if any of the other calculus, calculation pieces need to be adjusted, as we've done for other things in the past. But it's, we certainly will have time, as Claire mentions, before other areas come on for us to, to know more than we know now, and we will decide to adjust it sooner than a year from now. So, I'm comfortable moving forward.
Alan?
It's fun to watch these processes evolve over time. The proposal last year was, died because it only had three people supporting it, me, Betty, and George. And now, it's back on the table and getting traction, but it's kind of fun to watch people's evolve over time and, and see, see the program change. I really appreciate George's motion, move to have it apply to 30% of the units. I think that's probably more realistic and much more applicable here. I think this simplifies MUPD, but it also complicates the existing ordinance in that how does it impact all the other things that we've got going on? We've been working to revise it so that it has clear benefits and transparency. So, this, while simplifying it, I worry about how it, how it impacts everything, like, for instance, that one section about buying additional years with these additional public benefits. I'm not sure that even applies anymore, or if so, I'm not sure how. I think most of those provisions that we put in there still apply, you know, the laws and the rate of return and, and energy code and a lot of the, most of those revisions that we've made, which do create clear public benefits and create transparency, still apply. Interested in, in certified payroll being added as language. Interested in, in having it look, have us look at it in a year to see if it still makes sense, if we need to do revisions to it. Not necessarily a sunset, but a, a review timeline. And I agree with affordable housing language. I think affordable, we actually have an affordable housing program, and we call it that, and that's the low-income program that gets the tax exemptions. So, I think using those words creates confusion. So, I agree that if we deleted it from the, that's, that first part and just said workforce housing. And then, in section three, I think the language that we actually have in the, in the ordinance right now actually works, which says, funds received by the city shall be used for affordable housing and emergency shelter. And I think that's what we kind of came down on, and, and I think that's, that still works. And I was wondering if George and Mike, you'd accept that as a friendly amendment to delete the affordable housing in that first part and to adopt the language that's already in the ordinance as number three?
I would do that if, well-
Sure. In that case, I'm supportive of moving forward with this. It also, it's that option part. We, you know, when we proposed this, we wanted to do something that was real public benefit. Part of it was the affordable housing piece, and we proposed either having a number of units or, or paying them to a fee. This does that, but it does it in a slightly different way. And one of the things I'm not sure about is, is if this calculation on the fee payment par, option ends up being more or less than 10% of the tax exemption, I'm not sure that matters anymore, but I'm, I'd like to see that calculation done.
Another round. Chris, you're next.
Thank you. I appreciate the, the changes made to the motion. Taking it down to 30% is definitely a move in the right direction. There's a number of poison pills that can occur in MUPD, and my caution is not to trade one poison pill for another. So, I just want to be careful if, as you make changes, it doesn't create a, a different kind of challenge. And that leads to this, knowing that this does add a whole new dimension to the MUPD conversation. It's, it's a new dimension. It may be a good dimension, but it is a new dimension. And knowing how this new dimension is going to affect what's already been going on for me is the question. And that's why hearing staff say, you know, we might want to take some time to analyze what this impact might be. It's not to say we don't support it. I'm not hearing that. I'm hearing, this is a new dimension. It's being incorporated into the work that's already been done. What impact will it have? Because there's still elements of the first conversation we want to continue, and I don't want to know what the interconnected pieces are. This is a fairly complicated conversation, and when you insert a whole new element, you want to know what impact that new element's going to have. And I hear, you don't need to do any research on this because I've done the research and you need to trust me. And I don't know. I don't know what that research was. I would like to have staff have a chance to, to also analyze it. It's not that I don't trust the research that's been done. It's I would like some additional perspective from other people to hear whether this 30% requirement is going to have an impact, and if so, what impact it's going to have, and is it going to be a negligible impact or one that doesn't really affect things? In which case, I could support this completely. But I guess what I'm saying is, looks pretty good on the surface, but I don't know what repercussions it will have for other elements. And that's why if I'm inclined to say no at this point, it's not because I don't think it's got merit. It's just, I don't know. I'd like to have staff give me some feedback as to whether what's being proposed here is going to have a negative impact on other aspects of the MUPD conversation, some of which have been brought up, but there may be others that we don't even know about and haven't anticipated. So, I like the conversation. I like some of the accommodations that have been made, moving it down to 30%, all that stuff, changing the substitute language in number three. All of that stuff is great. I like that stuff. I just am not sure how this is going to impact the other aspects of the MUPD conversation. And so, I don't, I'm not comfortable moving on that today, but I am definitely interested in continuing to explore how it might be incorporated into the MUPD conversation.
Glenn?
A, actually, two suggestions for you in light of the time. I've listened to the conversation, and it sounds like there's a majority that supports moving forward, moving this into the ordinance. This is not a simple plug into the ordinance. Alan raised some of the issues that I've already been thinking about. Okay, so, what has to change in the ordinance if you plug this concept in? What are the other things that may, that the council may want to think about changing? Denny and I will need some time to sort of think through that stuff. Even if we could plug it in today, you still can't adopt the ordinance today because we don't have the actual ordinance language. So, my suggestion is, you vote on the motion. My guess is it's going to pass. You then vote on a motion directing us to bring back to you an extension of the suspension. And if you would unanimously do that, then I think we can get that public hearing because we have to have an ordinance, so it means public hearing. We could put it on your February 9th agenda to hold the public hearing, and then if you would take action with six of you voting yes, there wouldn't be any lapse in the suspension. And then, we schedule another work session with you after we have figured out, these are the things that necessarily would have to change with the existing ordinance. These are the things that you might think about changing, and we'd have, have had a chance to deal with that, which would answer some of the questions Alan's raising, some of the issues that Chris is raising, and I think some of the others of you are raising. So, those are my two suggestions is-
So, two, two motions, the first one that's on the table and then a following one to bring it back?
To direct us to move forward with a public hearing and with, assuming that you would all agree with unanimous consent of the council to have it on February 9th. The reason why, just so you know, the reason why I need unanimous consent is because under the charter, there has to be a certain number of days between when the ordinance is posted and when's your, and when your public hearing takes place. And I'm not sure we have that time to get it on the February 9th agenda, but unanimously, you can agree to reduce the notice. And we'll get probably posted tomorrow or the next day. It won't take us long to prepare the ordinance. I just want to make sure we could get on your agenda for February 9th if we can. So, first thing is you have a motion, you have George's motion on the table. So, the first thing would be if you're ready to just vote on that, and then, a motion to direct us to bring back a suspension ordinance.
I want to be sure we give you a chance to talk.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay. And we'll come back to that. Thank you, Glenn. So, so, you know, as I said in my earlier comments, I, I think, you know, this kind of dramatic change-up at this point is, is risky. It could be a total failure. But passing the old version, even with the revisions that we've been discussing, is also risky. We all know, you know, there's a, a potential threat for a ballot challenge to it. So, I'm definitely leaning towards supporting George's revisions, and as Mike stated, you know, we could build in a review in a year and see where that has left us. And then, I think we could definitely put in definitions so that we're clear about when we're talking about workforce housing. I use the words mid-market housing in my thing. We just define it as units available for rent or purchase at 30% of the AMI. So, that would just be our definition for MUPD of what that means. I appreciate George and Mike accepting Alan's proposal to use the language around, if you pay a fee in lieu of, it's for affordable housing programs, including emergency and transitional shelter programs. I was going to make that request as well. But then, we still have these other questions. Would we still require green building, local hire? How would the review committee be used? Would there be public benefit criteria in addition? So, I think that's the bulk of what we need to discuss once we've done with our, our business that we need to, you know, the more formal pieces. And I still want to see Alan's motion around the composition of a review committee. I think there were some important pieces there, so I don't want to lose that thread even if we postpone this till, into going into February. So, those were my comments.
Yeah, and I concur with all that. I just want to be sure that we don't lose any of the elements that people have really been asking about. And that is really about being sure that we have the good labor practices and protect all of that. I want to be sure that we have a review committee that really allows neighborhoods to fully participate in the way that we've talked about. So, I think all of those elements that we heard from neighbors and from the advisory group kind of need to be worked into this so people can see we heard their concerns and we're trying to respond to, to all of them. Yes.
Mike, Chris, fair, Sheriff.
I, I agree with you, Mayor, and I think we still have 45 minutes. I would encourage us to continue with the discussion, even though this vote would potentially put us to a future point to vote on this element. I would encourage us to continue with the next 45 minutes to talk about those other elements. I already made the one motion about the neighborhood composition, and I have others to make today that are an important part of making a whole MUPD ordinance right. So, I'm, I'm hopeful we're going to continue that after we dispose of this particular amendment.
You want to say before I?
Well, I, yeah, I would just, I would just like to suggest that if this motion passes, I don't think it's going to take a long time to go through the rest of it. Because most of what's, what staff has been working on can stay in. There's no problem. It's not controversial at all, and it's, in my opinion. And the only thing that would need to be changed would be some of the, you know, the 10% kickback stuff, and there's, there's just some things to scratch off and throw out.
So, if it is the will of the council, I would be glad to continue the conversation after the vote and would give the auditor the, and everybody who came for that, the chance to go home. And so, I'm, I'm happy to do that. But I do want to say, I still think it merits, we can go through all the other elements, but I still think it merits that second motion, which is to have, bring it back and have us look at the implications.
Sure.
Okay. So, let's, let's do that. And you want to put the first motion on? The first motion's on the table.
On the table.
On the table. So, you want to repeat what that is?
I, I can.
Is it exactly the way that it's written?
I can, and I can, I think, oh, you can amend it.
Okay.
"I move to direct the city manager to revise the MUPD ordinance so that the purpose and approval criteria ensure that projects receiving a tax exemption construct at least 30% of its dwelling units as workforce housing that shall be available as such for a minimum of 10 years." One, to be counted towards the 50% requirement, the cost of a dwelling unit must-
Thirty.
Thirty. Thirty percent requirement. Yes, thank you. "The cost of a dwelling unit must be no more than 30% of the area median income. In lieu of providing the required number of units that meet the criteria in section one, the owner of an approved MUPD project shall make an annual payment to the city in the amount calculated as follows. A, the payment as calculated in section two B shall be made for sufficient number of dwelling units, such that the number of dwelling units that meet the criterion in section one, plus the number of dwelling units for which an in lieu of payment is made, is at least 30% of the units in the development. For each dwelling unit for which an in lieu payment is made, the in lieu payment shall equal the difference between the annual rental and ownership, well, we're not talking about ownership, annual rental costs of the dwelling unit and 30% of the AMI, area median income." The city, three, "The city shall allocate all funds received from the provision in section two to workforce and affordable," oops, work-
Affordable housing programs.
Affordable housing and emergency. Affordable housing and emergency housing programs within Eugene.
Yes.
Okay. Moved in seconded.
If they paid all their taxes, we could use all the money for emergency shelter or workforce housing. I, if this, I don't like the in lieu of or the deduct. It should be 100% and reducing it to 30% is, is too low, in my opinion.
Alan?
In, in section one, where you said, "To be counted towards the 30% requirement, the cost of the dwelling unit," you meant the rental cost.
Well, the rental cost, yes.
Can we add that rental?
Yes. Let's do that.
Because we're not talking about ownership. We're talking about rent.
Yeah.
Say rent.
Say rent.
Okay. Everything okay with that, Glenn?
Mm-hmm.
Ready to vote? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, three, four, five, six, and opposition, two? No, you're going to vote for it. Seven in favor, one in opposition. It passes. Then, the second motion.
So, is this the motion to hold a public hearing?
Correct. This would be the, yes.
So, "Move to direct the city manager to hold a public hearing on extending the MUPD program suspension as soon as practical."
And if I could have you add, "And notwithstanding the notice requirement of the charter to hold the public hearing on February 9th."
And notwithstanding the notice requirement to hold the public hearing on February 9th.
Very good, Claire.
Wow.
I'm a good parrot.
Can you second?
Second.
Okay. Moved in seconded. All those in favor, please indicate. Does this have to be unanimous?
Yes. In order to reduce the public notice requirement, this would have to be unanimous. If Betty votes no, then we would just schedule it- If Betty votes no, then we would just schedule it with the, whenever we could in light of the notice requirement, which would be later in February.
And MPT 1 would go back into effect.
It's still in February.
We'll still have an effective date clause that says the extension goes into effect immediately. And if six of you will vote for the extension, I'm just trying to, you know, in case a couple of you don't show up, we may not get six votes. So I'd rather have it earlier. But we don't have to.
So a question, would it still be in February if it's not February 9th?
Yes, it will still be in February.
So it still doesn't give people a lot of time to think about it? I mean, the public, not us.
The, if we had the ordinance ready today, under the charter, we'd probably be able to hold the public hearing like February 16th is my guess. And that's what the charter would require. So yes, it would be in February to extend the suspension. That's all we're talking about right now, is extending the suspension. Right now, the suspension lapses at the end of February.
February 28th.
So if you don't extend that, then the old MPT program goes back into effect.
So, all those in favor? That's everybody. Okay.
Thank you.
All right. All right. Now we're ready to move on to the next discussions, right, Mike?
Mayor, I don't, I think that unless there's a particular order that everybody wants to go in, I would have the next motion.
Go ahead.
Which, and I actually have two still remaining. So I'll make the first one, and then would ask for you to put me in the queue to make the other one after this discussion. But this one will be to add the provision to require certified payroll. And I'll speak to that office if I get a second.
Moved and seconded.
As I brought up last night, there's certainly an opportunity for us to do this in a less stringent way, to ask for verification of local hire. But this is the certain way, as the state does, to make sure that any projects that are done are listed with detailed and accurate information. It's something that certainly construction companies are certainly accustomed to. It's something they do regularly with any of them of size and circumstance well enough to work on a prevailing wage job. This is something that they're very accustomed to. So it's not an out-of-the-ordinary thing to request of someone, and gives us certain insure knowledge of how many local people are working on that project. And it's the only way, near as I understand, to have certain insure information of that. We also then get that, as was mentioned last night, in a public document on a weekly basis. So while we can't legally compel a company to hire any particular percentage of not local businesses, but local people who work here to do the work, this is, in my estimation, the best way we can know how many local people are working on that job. And I think it's an important part of this.
Glenn?
Mike, a clarification. So I heard Denny talk about there may be certified payroll that happens weekly, or monthly, or annually. When you say add the certified payroll requirement, are you talking about at the end of the project, constantly during the project? I just need to know how to add this in, and I'm not sure what you meant by that.
My intent was during the course of the project, as a piece of information that they report to the city.
And how often?
Well, when I asked that question, got the response, weekly. I think that's, I don't know what's normal. And I don't want to ask a thing that's out of the ordinary or overly burdensome. So I don't know the answer to that. What would take suggestion?
Well, here's a suggestion that it says regularly report on certified payroll, and that the administrative rules would define what regularly means.
So moved.
Okay.
Good. Claire, you're next.
Yeah. So I definitely support the intention of what Councilor Clark's proposing. My concern about it, and maybe staff has some insight into this, is we've also are asking applicants to ensure that qualified minority and women-owned businesses have an equal opportunity to compete for these contracts. And it's my understanding that these may be businesses that have never worked on a prevailing wage job and don't generally do certified payroll. And it may be a stumbling block for them to be a part of one of these projects. So I wonder if there might be an alternative to the formal certified payroll process, which may also incur additional expense for those companies, to have a notarized payroll or some other means for verifying that they are meeting the local hire plan that they put forward.
Denny, did I see you going to answer that?
Yeah, I just, just, one of the things we recommend is a method for collecting the data we need that's not certified payroll. I think that's something we should consider. Again, because certified payroll is used really to comply with prevailing wage laws. I'm concerned a little bit about there being some confusion from people working on the job as to why they're filling out certified payroll, for example, and not getting prevailing wage. There might be some other legal issues that I'm not familiar with. The other thing that we heard from the contractors that we met with them is that for residential construction, a lot of the subs are not accustomed to doing prevailing wage, if that's your specialty trade. So it's not, it may not be as simple for those smaller companies who aren't used to doing prevailing wage. It may be something new that we introduced that may be a little bit labor-intensive for them. So I'm wondering if there's another path, that some other form of reporting mechanism that's not actually the legally binding prevailing certification.
I was going to say, my intent was not to make it a responsibility of all the subs, but to make it the overall responsibility of the general contractor. So I don't, to address your specific issue.
I believe it does trickle down. I don't, it warrants maybe more conversation with the actual folks who do this kind of work. It's not as, what we heard from this is not as simple as just filling out a form. It could be more complicated.
I also had, if I could, Mayor, I just want to finish that I, early on in the process around MPT, I was asked if I would meet with a group of contractors who were not necessarily, you know, developers or owners of large companies, but were the folks doing the work. Some of them were union, and some of them were not. But area trades folks who had a rather large meeting. And we talked about the pieces of MPT that were important to them when it comes to, you know, if we're going to give a local incentive and a local tax break, we want to make sure that we have that having the greatest impact for local people doing the work. And this was their certain, and their central, and their most important request, was to do certified payroll. So that's why it's so important to me to do as a, as a way of being responsive to the concerns of those folks that I heard. So I will be flexible here if there's a better way to go with this. But that, making sure that we have a certain infallible way to be able to say, this number of people with ZIP codes in this particular area are working on this job is critical.
If, I've got Greg and Alan in the queue. If your language of your motion tells them to come back with this and any other ways of looking at this, maybe give some time to-
I'll amend my motion to say that I would request of staff the opportunity for the most effective way possible, short of certified payroll, in order to verify with certainty that all the information about residency on all of the people working on, not the businesses, but the people working on a particular project.
That's okay with me. It's a second.
And I just think that might give a opportunity for people to know what you're putting out there, respond to it. We may get, you can get staff response, and you can get other people's responses, too.
And we have time.
Greg, and then Alan, and then George. Chris?
If I'm not mistaken, I think that the state has a provision through their MBE/DBE compliance office. And I know the Oregon Association of Minority Contractors has dealt with this issue with the state on this. So I think that there is an alternative to, you know, certified payroll for those small emerging businesses and women, minority-owned and disadvantaged businesses, to be able to, you know, do this, because they don't have, they don't have necessarily the labor force to be able to, you know, do that level of paperwork. But there is, there is an alternative method. So if you guys could look into that, if I remember correctly, it's been, it's been a few years since I've, I've come across this issue. But I do know that that was an issue several years ago. And that was addressed with the state, because there were a number of contractors in that category who were trying to do business with ODOT that did not have the capacity to be able to do certified payroll.
So I've got, I skipped over Chris, he's first. It's Chris, Alan, George, and Betty. I'm only going to point out to you that it's 2 minutes after 1. So if you really want to get to another topic, we probably ought to move through this rapidly. Chris?
Thank you. Just to kind of remind folks that this is a non-compelling discussion. In other words, I'm fine with this. I can vote for it. But to remember that there is no compelling aspect to what we would pass here. You can have certified, noteread, whatever you want to have, payroll. But if we should learn as a result of doing this, that they're not complying with the plan they submitted, then there's not a thing we can do about it. Because legally, by state law, if we should find out from this certified payroll that they're not doing what they said would do, if we've already awarded the MPT, the MPT will continue. So short of being able to say, well, now we know that you're not following your plan, there's no legal recourse we have with this information we may learn. Now, with that said, it certainly doesn't hurt to have that information, which is why I'm happy to support it. But I wouldn't want people to think that what we're doing is creating some sort of a compliance mechanism that says, your certified payroll will determine whether or not we continue with the MPT, or we have some other thing we can do once we learn this information. We may learn this information and go, oh, they're not complying with their plan. Uh, okay. And they may cry all the way to the bank. So that's okay, inasmuch as state law won't allow us to do what we want to do. I mean, we've been figuring out, we've been trying to figure out how to do it, and we just can't. So having a certified payroll will help us from an information standpoint. But don't be lulled into thinking that there's some sort of a compliance mechanism that comes with that. It's just information.
All right. Alan?
So, well, almost. But the last section of the, that was added to this MPT is that if you're not, if you're not in compliance with any of the requirements in any of the above sections, they can do civil penalties. So if you're not providing the data, you can be fined civil penalties. That doesn't mean you have to adhere to it, but you do have to provide it.
Yeah.
In regard to this motion, everybody that works on a job or manages a job knows who the person is, how many hours they work, what their rate of pay is, and what their total pay is. And that's easy. That's easy for people to come up with, because they have to do that anyway for them to pay their paychecks, right? What's missing is the ZIP code and where their address is. In one of the sections about information that we, or that we're asking them to provide, the last sentence of Section D on page 9 of this, of the ordinance, says, "In addition, the first year's reporting shall include home, city, or ZIP code of the construction labor workers." If we could just like add to that, it says name, hours, work rate, and total pay, then you could determine what kind of compliance of local workers there are. Because if it's just the, how many workers are in the ZIP code, but they all work a half an hour each, that doesn't really tell you the right information. It's how much. So I think that can be worked out without actually doing certified payroll, because it's information that everybody already has.
Hey, George?
Well, I imagine a certified payroll would also require hours, overtime hours. These were some questions that came up at one of the developments that we approved. And I, you know, we, it's probably possible, I'm not sure, but we could, if someone is in gross violation, like, why couldn't we make them use a year, lose a year of their exemption? I don't want to go into that right now, but, but there could be a penalty for not.
Can't do it.
Pull it back once you give it to them.
Can't do it.
It depends on what you're saying is the gross violation. If the gross violation is of the plan that they submitted, you can't do it. If the violation is they're not submitting the data, then we can keep imposing the penalties. And if they don't pay the penalties, the provision that Alan read also says failure to pay the penalty is a grounds for terminating the exemption.
I see. All right. Thank you. Maybe $118,000.
Thank you.
Okay, Betty?
And county.
I just wonder how you, if people work here, some business, which I won't identify, said they hired local people. But sure, they're local after they move here. So how do you distinguish between people who moved here for the job and are now local and other people? I don't understand how that works.
Like the homeless discussion.
The construction trades do move around. They follow the work. So that is an issue. I think the, what we focused on really is the, who you contract with, the companies. But if the company's located here locally, it's likely that all the employees, or majority of the employees, are going to be local. So that's why we kind of focus this around who they contract with, not exactly every person who works on the job. Because those trades do move around a lot to follow the work, so to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we're going to vote on Mike's motion. All those in favor, please indicate. 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, in favor, and none in opposition. It passes. Dex's motion?
Thank you, Mayor. I'm not sure we have adequate time for this, but we can postpone if we do not. I move, and I just want to say as a cursor, I'll speak to this if I get a second, but this is a motion designed to go beyond its application to MPT, to solve another set of problems while we're at it at the same time. I move the city manager draft all necessary ordinance revisions to allow a developer to use up to 50% SDC credit on a multiple-unit development of five units or more for the purpose of mitigating public impact within relative proximity to the development. Application for this credit must be made to council and in partnership with the affected neighborhood association.
Second.
Bujan, seconded.
This particular tool, an amendment to this, was originally designed in the discussion around neighborhood analysis of a particular project. So that, you know, neighborhood association that may say, yeah, we like the project, fine, I guess, but it's going to have an impact on transportation issues. And we really would like to see that there's a bike path added to this particular side when you're grading off the, whatever the particular public impact is that they'd like to see addressed. This gives the opportunity for the neighborhood association to work with the developer, make application to us to say, can we waive that small portion of SDCs to pay the developer to do this project? Rather than having that become something that's a goal, waiting 10 or 12 years for it to get on the CIP and get done someday in the future, but have it done for less money, with less weight, at the time of the development, and have it be a benefit to those neighbors in the general proximity to that development. This also solves a problem that we have with non-MPT projects in the north part of our community. George and my boards, we have several multi-unit developments where the neighborhood associations are saying, gosh, we'd really like it if you'd, you know, go ahead and take that planned road there. And as long as you're grading off that area, great, go ahead and grade that off and punch that road through the way it's planned to be, rather than waiting for 12 years before we do that. So we have appropriate access for kids that ride their bikes and so forth to school. This is a funding mechanism that foregoes the SDCs that the city would get in order to address the things we're going to pay for with those SDCs in the future, but to do it sooner and to do it cheaper. And one of the other byproducts is, it forces the developer and the neighborhood association to work together, to be partners, and to be on the same team when there's a multi-unit development. It forces them to say, hey, yeah, we all agree this is a community good. Guy says, I'd like to make a, you know, another couple of bucks or cut my costs in the process of doing that work. And the neighborhood gets something they like. So I would appreciate the support for this. I think it helps mitigate impact with MPT. It also helps in other areas.
Glenn?
So there are several issues related to this. The first is if you expand this beyond MPT, you will have to have another public hearing, because the public hearing on this ordinance was just on MPT. So that's not a bar. It's just something else you will have to do.
So, that's not a bar, it's just something else you will have to do at some point. Second, I'll need to talk to Mike to make sure I understand the intent of this, and we don't need to do it right now, but to the extent that the intent of this is to identify who's actually going to be doing work as a contractor for the city, because it's the developer is an offset of SDCs, maybe doing some additional work, there are a host of legal issues, including prevailing wage, charter issues, the council does not get to determine who a contractor is. There are probably ways to work through at least some of those things, and that's why I need to talk to Mike to understand more about it. And then there may be other issues just in terms of how SDCs work under state law in terms of what they can be spent for. Again, we, we may be able to work through some of those things. When we first heard of this motion, the way I was going to deal with all of the issues, at least related to MPT, is just add the phrase, "To the extent legally permissible," and then we were going to say, "SDCs could be used for, or would be used to mitigate impacts out of the neighborhood." The way this one's crafted, you know, if the council is supportive of this, I just want you to know, it's not, it's not like I could bring something back to you tomorrow, there will be, all those legal issues we'll have to work through.
So I've got Chris and George and Alan, and I just want to ask Mike the question beforehand of whether you want to constrain your motion to, as he just spoke about it, to be MPT-centric as opposed to being more involved or not?
I don't, I brought it up at this time because of its relevance and because it addressed another piece of what I thought we were going to discuss, but I'm in no hurry and I would like it done properly and bring it back before us in those ways.
Okay. Chris?
Yeah, I'm-
Just bring it back to us, that's what it directs.
Okay. I'm in agreement with the concept here, because I've also heard from the neighborhoods that there was a real concern that developments were occurring in their neighborhoods and that the SDCs, which would appropriately be used to deal with that development in their neighborhoods, were being allocated somewhere else. So they'd wind up with the development and not the SDCs to deal with it, and that they would just like to ensure that they get at least some of that SDC to deal with the projects that generated the SDC in the first place. And I'm, I'm supportive of that. The degree to which this is addressing that, I think, is, is absolutely fine. What additional work needs to be done to ensure that it's legally compliant, I would agree, we want to make sure we have that, but what I heard was the intent was, we want to make sure if we get a development, we also get the SDCs to deal with the impact of it. And it really was not so much around the contractors and wages and so forth, it was really just to make sure SDCs were used at the same time that development was occurring in neighborhoods, so they didn't wind up with a big development and no SDCs to respond to it, which is what SDCs are all about. So from that standpoint, I actually think it's, it's kind of a good idea.
George?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm going to support this motion, I think it's really logical, makes a lot of sense. Attorney will bring back more information, but I think this will really be a big benefit for the neighborhoods, because they're the ones that are going to, you know, live with the effects of development and this will be beneficial for them, so I will support it.
Alan?
Yeah, I think the concept's okay too. I didn't quite understand that it applied to everything, so that makes it a little bit more complicated. SDCs are complicated in, in and of themselves. I had the same questions about who would do the construction, it kind of implies that the developer would, but that's not necessarily the case. So with that clarification, what kind of projects are permissible as SDC uses are all part of our SDC rules, so I'm assuming that all of that still applies. This is just a provision that 50% of it would be in the local area. I don't know what proximate means, though. I know what close, close proximity means nothing, it means close, close, because proximity means close, but proximity, maybe that needs to be defined a little bit more, maybe within the neighborhood association boundaries or something like that would be a way to look at it, so that's, so it's a little bit more clear.
Mike, did you have something else before we vote?
No.
Okay. Everybody ready to vote? All those in favor, please indicate. One, two, eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. Next up?
I've got Mayor, motion number five, I don't know if there's enough time to discuss it today or not.
I have one motion too.
You want to go first, Alan?
Yeah, it was actually the, my motion number two, but the second half of it, which starts on the, on the second page, halfway down that paragraph, is, "In addition to other duties of review panel, the panel also will be charged with reviewing and advising the city manager on individual project compliance with applicable requirements prior to approval mid," which is what we do now, "but also add in midway through construction and upon completion of the construction, and the city manager will provide information from the review panel about compliance during and after construction if the council is appropriate during a project and as part of the annual review of the MPT program." Second?
Bujan seconded.
That just adds, one of the lessons learned from Capstone is, if we had had these rules and we were able to look at it midway through and at the end, we could have done something about it, but we didn't have the rules and we didn't have this provision. So I think this is something that I learned from the way that we dealt with Capstone that would make this a better process.
So my suggestion is if you agree with this, don't say anything.
Just a point of clarification, so your motion is actually this second part of it starting with the addition?
Yeah, starting in addition to.
Okay, I'm clear.
Okay, ready to vote? All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition, it passes. George?
Thank you, Mayor. This is motion number, my motion number five. I move to amend the ordinance to provide that before any area other than downtown becomes eligible for MPT projects, the area must have refinement plan policies adopted by city council and acknowledged by DLCD that specifically cover multifamily and mixed-use projects within their respective areas that are supported by city tax exemptions, city funds, or other city financial resources.
Second?
Bujan seconded.
This is similar to, it's a little different from the language that's in the, proposed language in the revised ordinance, and, so I, this is, this is something, I feel like the neighbors need, once again, the neighbors need to be involved at the get-go, and it shouldn't take a lot of time once, you know, like, for instance, Jefferson West Side, there's some neighborhoods that already have refinement plans, and so it wouldn't affect them because they're already in place. There are other neighborhoods that don't have plans, and they would develop them before any development occurs there, and so, and then once, you know, and they have a lot of good models to work on, so it shouldn't take a lot of time, shouldn't be, we're not going to be approving these other areas, we're starting with downtown initially, and it'll be a while before we add the other areas, so there'll be plenty of time to, to work this out, and this way the neighbors will be involved and have a good plan and be receptive to the projects.
Glenn?
Just a question on the intent. So, the motion sort of does potentially do things. One is it says, have the refinement plan policies that specifically cover multifamily and mixed-use projects, and that I understand. It's at the end where it says, "And are supported by tax exemptions, city funds, or other city financial resources." You may recall back, I think it was with Capstone, I talked to you a couple times about whether a MPT decision is a land use decision, and I told you it was not, and Luba supported that. If this is intended to add language to refinement plan policies to make the council's MPT decisions land use decisions, which then would be appealable to Luba in the Court of Appeals, I, I need to know if that's the intent, because I'd write this amendment differently. If that's not the intent, I need to know that, because again, that would clarify for me how to write this.
I see. Well, that, it was not my initial intent, so, I'm wondering, are we going to have another MPT discussion and work through the rest of the, the things that are on the checklist?
Yeah, our thought would be, even if you get through them all today, we'll need to come back for a work session and sort of lay it all out and hear what might have impacted the others, and so you have a final look before you actually put them into a final ordinance, so that would be our intent.
Well, I think, I think this, it would be best to take, take this off the table, or, but I-
You're going to pull it back?
Yeah, pull it and, and deal with it next time.
Okay. Claire?
So I'm going to take the liberty of introducing a motion that was sent to you by Councilor Zelenka, because I want to get it on the table, and this is regarding the MPT review panel, and some of this may change up with the new iteration that we have of MPT, but I'm going to read what Councilor Zelenka sent out. So I move to have the city manager's program review panel comprised in the following manner. The city manager shall create a program review panel to provide third-party review of individual applications and of the program. The panel will be comprised of the following members: two at-large neighborhood representatives, and we've already addressed how they'd be appointed in other motions, for individual, and for individual applications, two additional neighborhood representatives from the neighborhood in which the project will be located; four technical professionals shall be appointed by the council, and they shall include a representative from each of the following four groups: architect, green building specialists, developers, labor, and environmental, public health. In order to be eligible to serve on the review panel, members may be asked to sign a confidentiality agreement, so there's some details in the motion that might change again. The review panel shall review projects to ensure projects are in compliance with program criteria, review project applications, conduct a midway review, and a review upon completion.
It's already been done.
Yeah, so, and then at the end, if the applicant fails to provide a plan, oh, excuse me, the, conduct a review upon completion to identify any problems and have the applicant submit within 20 working days a remedy for any non-compliance, and if the applicant fails to provide a plan within 20 working days or fails to remedy the non-compliance of the program, the review panel may request the city manager to take appropriate action.
Second?
Bujan seconded. Glenn?
Did you want to speak to that, Claire, before I?
Sure. So obviously there, there's some details in here that would be adjusted based on motions we've already passed and some of the new ways this program might operate, but the, for me, the heart of this is that we have the two at-large neighborhood representatives, the two neighborhood reps from the affected neighborhood, the technical professionals, and that those technical professionals cover the architects, green building, developers, labor, and then environmental and public health. So, and then the process of having some checks and balances during the time that the project is being developed.
So I did talk to Alan about this after he sent that out last week. The concern that I raised with him is, this is a committee that's advising the manager, and the way it was structured by Alan and the way that I think you put in the motion is that it's a council-appointed committee. That's a legal problem, because you now have basically the council committee getting involved in day-to-day city manager staff decisions as opposed to a city manager-appointed committee. The way we had originally crafted it, and I know you've changed this, but just so you understand the distinction, the city manager was going to appoint the two at-large members, but based on people who were nominated by the mayor. And so what we were trying to do is be aware of and cognizant of the concern that was raised, well, it shouldn't be just the city manager who gets to pick whoever he wants, so there would be a way for somebody to say, well, here are two nominations, if the manager said that person isn't good enough, you know, for whatever reasons, then the mayor could nominate somebody else. So the manager wouldn't be able to just pick anybody, it would have to be somebody that the mayor nominated. But if the council's appointing the folks, then it should be a policy-level committee that's advising the council about the policy, as opposed to looking at the day-to-day, how well is this developer doing, and telling the manager, manager, the developer isn't doing good enough, you should go impose civil penalties for that person.
So, in my enthusiasm to get this out on the table, I just read what was on the document that Alan had sent, and I would be happy to revise it that it, that it not be appointed by the council, that they be nominated by the mayor and appointed by the city manager.
That would take care of the concern I raised.
And you were second?
I was, I was Claire's second, so I accept that amendment.
Okay. Mike?
This runs contrary to the way we've already made a decision about the appointments, and here's the important point of distinction for me, while I get what Glenn has said and it's important, about the ongoing check back, and I heard what Alan said about what we learned from Capstone, that we have to check back. I think we need a second mechanism for that, and here's the important difference. When we get an application, this council decides approval or disapproval of that application. We have to have direct advice from affected neighborhoods and direct advice from experts about our decision that we're responsible for, do we grant it or not in the first place? I say if we want ongoing compliance checks that of some kind, that's wonderful, and we want others involved, that's wonderful, but they should be subject to the manager's authority at that time and obviously not ours, but those need to be two separate things. The analyzing of the application in first and the checking back as the project goes on. So I can't support the motion as it's currently framed, because I, I don't want to abdicate that initial information from-
Glenn's got, maybe I-
I think maybe I confused you, Mike. I wasn't saying that you couldn't have the neighborhoods appoint those neighborhood representatives the way you've already voted on. You can do that. So, you could have one committee composed of, I think it's sometimes six, sometimes eight, and the neighborhood representatives are all appointed the way you've already voted on that, we're just talking about the four technical reps, and so if the manager is appointing those four technical reps, you could have the one committee composed of the, well, for an application, it would be the four neighborhood reps appointed by the neighborhoods, the four technical people, they would give the advice to the manager, which would get forwarded to you as part of the application, so you're hearing from those neighborhood reps. And then when it comes time to the day-to-day stuff, they're just reporting to the manager. When there's sort of the annual review, it would be a committee composed of six, two neighborhood reps who had been appointed by the neighborhoods, and still the four technical people. So does that clarify for you?
Yeah, it does, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, I've got Chris and Alan in the queue.
What he said.
Okay, Alan?
Yeah, I obviously think this is a good idea. And I like the clarification, so this is just about the four technical people and the, and the work that they're going to do along the way. And it's not a council committee, it's a city manager advisory panel, which is an important clarification and with this ability to remedy, or require a, a plan for remedy.
So can we pause with this and make sure that we've got the language right? Because there are things that you put in your motion that have already been decided in other places, and so you're really just talking about the four technical members of the advisory committee, in essence, are you not?
I believe that's correct, plus the periodic review with-
That's already been decided too.
And I would-
That's already been. So, so basically what you're doing, right now, the language in the ordinance, without you doing anything at the moment, would be four technical professionals such as architects, green building specialists, labors, lenders, or developers. The essence, I believe, of your motion is to change that to say, it's four technical reps, one each from, and I can't remember, it was architects, labors, developers, and-
Environmental, public health.
Okay, so you'd be specifying those four categories, one rep from each of those.
Correct.
Architects slash green buildings.
Yep.
That's the motion then?
Correct.
And that's, you're okay?
I'm okay with that.
All right, ready to vote?
We strip it down.
All those in favor, please indicate. Eight in favor and none in opposition, and that's it.
Wow.
Yeah, I think that was a good-